So they're already up in my hand, okay. All right. Good evening. We'd like to welcome everybody here to the first May meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners. Welcome. And at this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Dodson if he would lead us to a moment of silence and the pledge, please.
Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. Intelligible, good, we shall wish thee peace, one nation, united in the principle, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, are there any additional items to be added to the agenda?
Madam Chair, at the end of our business, I'd like to add that per North County General Statute 143, 318, 11A5, to establish for instructing staff or agents concerning negotiation of the amount of compensation or other terms of an employment contract. Close session.
Okay. Any other additional items to the agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor of the amended agenda say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Any discussion?
I got one quick question.
Sure.
Is there any reason we can't move the tax bill right off?
Is that number F?
Beg your pardon?
Number F.
Yeah. That's the one way to go from a dollar to five. Without objection, I'll move.
Does that need to be done? Okay.
I mean, okay. The ones that approved.
What about G? Are you going with G too, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm looking at the attorney.
I was gonna double check with Mary, but I don't see her in here.
Even better.
If not, we can bring it up here.
Yeah, when she comes back, we'll make sure. But if not, we'll just slide it over there.
Okay. All right. Any more questions or discussion? Okay, tentatively, item F and G, we move to the consent agenda. Okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Right. Now, we'll move into our public hearing on our capital improvements program for the fiscal year 2020 to 2024. Dr. Cumpkin, excuse me.
Thank you. On April 15th, I presented the recommended capital improvements program to the board. As a reminder, it's our five-year capital plan. We had a total request of $131,884,415. I have recommended that we try to approve $109,459,300 in the next five years. So it's been on display for three weeks. See if anybody makes comment.
Okay. All right. At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing on the capital improvements program. Is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor of the CIP for 2024? 2020 to 2024. Anyone to speak against? Okay, we'll just close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Okay? Public comments. Oh, it's okay, it's fine. You're doing double duty today here. Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Some of those names may be part of the next agenda items, so identify that for us.
Right. Okay. Right, well, we've got Ms. Deidre Stevenson. Is she upside?
Are you gonna let... She signed up to speak under the courthouse issues.
Right, all of these. We have Emily Everest, Chris Altrey, Karen Brown, and Mike Bean under the courthouse. Are they gonna be part of your presentation?
They are.
Okay, so they're not public comments.
They're public comments, but not our regular...
Okay. So are you good with us just moving into yours?
Sure, not sure.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My name is Vernon Stewart. I'm the elected DA for the Lee Counties, and I'm here to tell you that we, my office, my staff, the legal assistants, do not want to be relocated out of the courthouse where we currently operate out of. We'd like for the courthouse where we are to be renovated and give us the space that we need, has been set forth and described to the architect and to persons affiliated with the county here. I see... And first of all, please stand up if you're here from the district attorney's office and/or in support of the district attorney's office, standing before us. This is a very serious issue. Thank you very much. It's a very serious issue to us, and it really boils down to a few issues. One is risk. What additional risk are created by moving aside the courthouse? Second would be productivity, and the third would be whether a new place provide us appropriate space. And you probably have a diagram in your package that sets forth a proposal, and I'll operate from that proposal. But first, I'll talk about the risk. When you put us over there, you're gonna have the public... The way it's designed is our office will be divided up into two halves. And in the middle, you will have a public hallway. And my folks will go have the legal assistants will be over here, the lawyers will be over here for the most part, they're gonna have to come and go across the hall, and the public will be right there. The public will consist of the very people that we are trying for the crimes of Lee County. We will also, if you put us there, the victims that come in to talk to us will be subject to whoever's in that hallway, the witnesses will be subject to whoever's in the hallway, and it is not a safe environment. It will not be. It has to increase the risk to my ADAs and to my legal assistants, to the victims, to the witnesses, and to any other person affiliated with prosecution of cases, whether it be in district court or whether it be in superior court. You have... You will have and hear from people tonight, at least one person, that talks about how they felt during the course of a trial, coming and hanging around the courtroom. And by the very nature of the proceedings, the very nature of what we do, you don't feel... The people that have been victimized one time before don't feel comfortable coming back in the same environment where they know the alleged perpetrator's gonna be or associate with them, or their families. You know, each person charged with a crime generally has three or four or five family members that are interested in the process and come and show up on behalf of that person. And they're not necessarily happy that their family member's been charged with a crime. And a lot of times, they're hostile. And putting us in that environment is gonna subject us and other people to the hostilities associated with that type of situation. You can... You will be forced... There'll be forced interactions with the defendants. They will be sharing the bathrooms, they will be sharing the other facilities, they'll be sharing the benches or the seats. And that's just not a good... That's not a good environment. We don't have to deal with that right now where we are. If you put us over there, then you have our office in one separate building, and you have the courthouse where we do our business and the trial work, where by the way, we have at least 25 days or 25... 20 days of regular court and five additional days where we have two courts on one day going. And you separate us, we're walking back and forth, back and forth. We're getting driving record checks, we're getting files, we're getting witnesses, we're bringing people back, and we're having to walk a gauntlet between the two courthouses. And so not only would we be subject to the parties and the people I've described in the facility where our offices are, then we walk the gauntlet and we go up to the courthouse the same way the general public does. And there again, there are a lot of unhappy people with prosecutors. We are not known for kind and gentle things in the courthouse environment. There have been prosecutors that have been killed, shot. Just remember recently in Raleigh, a young lady prosecuted a defendant, and a plan was designed and carried out to inflict retribution on that young prosecutor, and they kidnapped her dad, and they took her down to Atlanta. And he was in five... Within five minutes of being killed as a result of his daughter prosecuting a defendant. Those things are real life. You had a Texas prosecutor shot in his home, you had an assistant DA in Texas shot in his home, shot outside his work. When you put us in the courthouse, if you do, and we certainly hope you don't, you can't tell what's in front of the courthouse that faces Warner Boulevard. People can walk there freely. You can't tell really what's on the left. You've got a parking lot, people have regular access into the parking lot, unchecked access. Okay, so you have the gauntlet, you walk, then you have the risk on the other side of the building, you have no exit on the right side of the building, and then you have to face people that come from the left. We have already had one lady shot in that parking lot within the last two years, not 100 feet where the proposal would be put in. These ladies, the legal assistants, in offices. They're the ones that are in these offices for eight hours a day. They're the ones that are beside the windows. They're the ones that are, you know, coming into contact with the people the most. We assistant DAs will be coming and going, but they're there eight hours a day. You will hear more about the risks associated with a relocation. Now, insufficient space. If you look at your diagram, to place us in that building under the current plan and for us to comply with federal law, which requires that children be separated and kept safe and have a safe room in your DA's office, and to give the victims a separate room, and to have space for the increase in staff associated with the increase in the age, which is part of the Juvenile Justice Reform, you will have to change one ADA room to a conference room, do away with a paralegal room, change a legal assistant room to a work area, change another ADA's office to a legal assistance office, another ADA's office to a legal assistance office, and the same thing for a third and a fourth and a fifth on the right side of the proposed office space. The hallway, the waiting area that's designated on your map, I mean on your diagram, that is really a hallway right now. It's not a waiting area. That's a hallway from point A to point B. So when we get over there, if we were placed there, we will be out of space with the addition of any help under the Juvenile Justice Reform Act, okay? And there'll be no room for growth over the next five or 10 years, and we'll be out of space just like we are now. So you're only shifting a problem. Our needs are 17 full-time offices, additional space for the juvenile age requirement, a victim waiting area, a child-friendly area, a large conference room so we can meet with the families, meet with the witnesses, meet with law enforcement, trial prep, a file room, workspace for machines, a copier, whatever else may be technical in there, and restrooms. The plan does not have a conference room. It does not have two secure waiting rooms. It does not have a break room. It does not have workspace. So having said that, I respectfully stand before you and ask you to make as a paramount concern the safety of these folks that are right here that we've talked about, the safety of your citizens that are in your neighborhoods, safety of officers that come into courthouse to visit us. Make security and safety a paramount concern. Who is the most... Whose opinion is the most important in this county, probably as it relates to law enforcement and security? It is your sheriff. Your sheriff is of record, as of right now... Your sheriff, right now, dated May the 2nd, reading to the record, "In reference to the idea of moving the Lee County District Attorney's Office to the old courthouse, I wanted to write this letter and express my safety concerns if this change occurs. I feel that moving our district attorney's office to the old courthouse could pose a threat to our district attorneys as they travel back and forth between the old and new courthouse, especially during high-profile court cases. As the sheriff of Lee County, I feel that our district attorney's office should remain where it is currently located. There's no more powerful opinion than from the high sheriff of this county that's responsible for the security of the people on that property." Thank you again very much.
How many people are gonna be speaking?
I'm representing the Lee County private bar.
Okay, so that's four, five. Is there anyone else?
There's four additional people on behalf of the DA's office, including myself.
Four, five, six. Okay, if you could limit it to about two or three minutes, just because we...
Limit it to the DAs or ADAs that live in Lee County, Madam Commissioner.
Pleasure of the board. She said limit it to the DAs or ADAs that live in Lee County.
May I be heard?
I...
They've signed up.
Yeah, they've signed up. So I mean, I think we just, you know, need to move forward with the ones that have signed up. I just wanted to make sure. We've got two things going on here, because we had people sign up for public comments, which is under one set of rules, and then Mr. Stewart was the only one that had technically signed up to be on the agenda. So, okay.
I will do my best to be respectful of your time and request.
Understood. Thank you.
To give you some context, my name is Emily Everest. I'm an assistant district attorney here in Lee County. I have been a licensed district attorney for approximately four years. Over the last three years, I have been handling special victims cases, specifically domestic violence and sexual assault cases, both here and in a prior district, and I'm speaking from that perspective. As you may be familiar, there's currently a Victims' Rights Act in the state of North Carolina, and part of the language of that statute specifically says that the district attorney's office shall provide a secure waiting area during court proceedings that does not place the victim in close proximity to the defendant or the defendant's family. As you also may be familiar, in the past election, approximately 62% of North Carolina citizens approved Marcy's Law, which further enhances victims' rights in the criminal process, which I think is an important consideration because it goes to show you your constituents' concerns and victims' voices and rights in the court process. The modifications, as proposed, would cause great harm to a victim's participation in the process. Specific to a domestic violence victim, their offender is someone they have an intimate relationship with. The mere coming forward and reporting that crime is a struggle for them. And you're now asking that when they come to the court process, they have to meet with the DA's office in a separate building, and then walk across an open area where they are exposed and vulnerable to their offender or everyone, anyone else who stands in opposition to their position to come and speak. To further enhance this, I want to give you a real-life example. Since I have been here, I had a session of district court for domestic violence offenses. I had a victim who met with me in a conference room. It became apparent there was a safety concern going on. In domestic violence offenses, safety planning with victims can be an important component in proceeding criminally. She and I orally agreed to a safety plan. Her offender was waiting in the parking lot, and she feared telling law enforcement because he would know she did not come back to the car. So the arrangement was she would call me to let me know she was home safely. She got to the car and realized that her offender was upset the case had not been dismissed in court that day, and that he was going to assault her in the parking lot. She fled through the open courtyard that, as proposed, she would have to walk to and from just to come to court, and ran into the building. And because I was the last safety point she had, she came looking for me, and I just happened to be in the courthouse taking paperwork, and she was frantic. And I took her into our office and attempted to compose her and bring law enforcement in. And her offender was then circling the inside of the building, clearly looking for her, seeking her out. If the proposed changes go through, the greater safety risk increases for that victim. That victim had children. Her offender continued to threaten her. If she did not come out, he was going to be at the bus stop waiting for her children when they got off. The proposed changes would mean that if she came to court, her child would be in one building while she testified, while she sat in another. These victims feel vulnerable when they're on the stand, and the proposed changes would make them physically vulnerable, and I ask you to consider that in making your decision.
Thank you.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Chris Altrey. I'm a district attorney in Lee County. I have been so for about seven years. I was a private attorney before that in this district. I want to talk about a couple of issues, particularly about efficiency of the courts and then about security, and I'll keep it brief and I'll try and truncate some of the comments I was gonna make. I will say this, and I think some of the attorneys that are present here would say this, is I'm all about making our courts more efficient, getting things worked out and getting things done. I believe very heavily in this, and as a matter of fact, some of the people that are partners with some of the attorneys that I work with all the time. They know when I come to court, I would like to see things done. Part of seeing things done is being efficient. Part of being efficient in courts is getting access to what you need. That means records, law enforcement reports, law enforcement officers, probation officers, people that are not available for court sometimes because they're overscheduled, because they don't have enough resources. So sometimes we have to fall back on our office to get the information we need to do our job and do it correctly, do it efficiently, make sure we make use of the government funds that come to that building. Now, I always try and do that. I try and work things out when I can. As a matter of fact, a couple of the attorneys that are here today, last Friday, Mr. Post appeared in court, and he wanted to address a bond on a newly charged felon, and I didn't have any information at that point, and I had to do that. I think the same thing's happened with several people in this room. Now, that required me to get access. I have another kind of perspective on this, because when I got hired as a DA, we had some staffing issues about seven years ago. Whenever I started in this county, I did three to four days of district court a week along with having a felony case load and a superior court load. Now, when I did that, one of my duties was I went into people's court, every single people's court session for about five years. That people's court was inside that building that we're gonna be moved to potentially. That was one of the least efficient courts I dealt with. It felt like being on an island. I couldn't get records, I couldn't get access to my witnesses. That's what it was like in that courtroom. That's what flip-flopping this will essentially make every courtroom now being removed from the information we need. That will cause a problem. Now, I will cut off those comments there, and I want to talk a bit about security, and I'm gonna talk about this a little bit in short form, because I think on your... In your commission here, you have access to somebody that has a wealth of tactical training and has history as a law enforcement officer. I will say this. I signed up for this job. I know what this job is, I know how it is, and I know what potential safety issues are. It's just what it is. You are in a courtroom with someone every single session, sometimes more than the law enforcement officer. You are in there every single session, and you become the face of that person. I can't imagine how many people are in prison right now with Mr. Bean and his career that know his name and know his face. Now, it's what we do. But here's the issue that I have. I rely greatly on my staff. I love my staff. They're great, they're fantastic at their jobs, but they didn't sign up for that. They didn't sign up for what I do. The reason all these people that are here are their family members that are concerned about their safety, because what is happening here? You're moving them from a secure building with metal detectors and security, and you're moving them to a first-floor location surrounded by windows with no in-place security, with tight corridors, tight doorways, one-way in and out. You go to any law enforcement officer and you ask them what that means. It's offensive to me. It is offensive to me to put these ladies right here, and my victims, in that place and put them in that danger. And I will say this. The fact is, is that the chief law enforcement officer of this county has said it is not safe. It has been said in writing, it has been said orally, and it has now been said by the chief safety officer and law enforcement officer of this county, if we are moved, and if and when something happens. That's gonna be a problem. Durham, April 2019 shooting, right out front of the courthouse. Guilford County, May of 2018, April of 2019, shootings out front of the courthouse. By the way, Guilford County's where a lot of your gang members go to hide out after they shoot people. June 2016, Lee County. Somebody shot out in front of that very place. What happens every day when a judge shows up at this courthouse? There's a security officer waiting out front in that parking lot. To walk him through the exact same area that you expect our victim to walk through. What happens when he leaves? Someone walks him out. We have victims every single day in that courthouse interviewing for what's going on in that courthouse. As a matter of fact, we have the family members of the victim in our most recent death penalty case that occurred at the end of the year last year, and she had some experiences in the courthouse that I think give some light on this, so I'm gonna yield to her, Ms. Brand.
My name is Karen Brown, and my nephew was murdered in 2013. We spent a lot of time in the courthouse, a lot of time with these people, took care of us. The death penalty case, Mr. Sanders, was said to be a gang-affiliated individual. The death penalty case, Mr. Sanders was said to be a gang-affiliated individual. And it's very uneasy to sit in a courtroom. You don't know who any of these people are. Could that be one of the gang members that are waiting for witnesses to come out? You don't know. There is a safe place back in the DA's office where we spent a lot of time. I'm not comfortable being somewhere, being in that close contact with people I don't know. Um, we were approached by the family of Mr. Sanders outside the courthouse. And I think that type of interaction would only be increased if we have to walk back and forth through these open areas. We were also approached by another family member of another defendant, there were four defendants in this case. So this is a safe haven where they are now, do they need more space? Absolutely, it's terribly cramped. But you know you're safe back there, there's a metal detector, like there's anything like that in old courthouse. So in my opinion, the most important voice is that of the victim. And I'm here to let you know that what is being proposed, in my opinion, is not safe, not for the victims and not for these people that were there. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Greetings to all of you. First of all, let me thank you for this opportunity to address you and express our concerns about our future working conditions. We are by far and away the majority occupiers of the courtroom. We staff and prosecute District Court every day. Three Tuesdays out of the month, there are two District Courts that are in session simultaneously. In addition, two Mondays out of the month, there are separate sessions of probation violation court, which start at 2:00 PM. On top of that, two weeks out of every month, we have week-long sessions of Superior Court, where we handle only felonies. This, again, is in addition to all of the District Court commitments that I've talked to you about, which means at least fifty percent of our working days involves our office covering, at a minimum, two separate courts running at the same time. And on those days where there are two sessions of District Court also being run at the same time, we're at that point responsible for covering three courts. My point is that our office uses the courtrooms every day, more than anyone else. We are courtroom attorneys. We can't do our jobs efficiently without remaining close to the courtrooms. Traditional and customary space needs analysis asked as a first question. What is the highest and best use of the space in question? We are in the best position. The question is how to continue to keep us there and expand. And the obvious answer is to keep us where we are and to allow us to expand. Inevitably, in every session of court, there is a need to return to our office multiple times a day for a record for the judge, or to retrieve some legal authority for issues that have come up, or to summons a witness. Also, defense attorneys often retrieve records from our office. To lengthen the time that it takes to perform these necessary tasks because we have to leave the building is a waste of everyone's time. And as a practical exercise, I paced it off. Right now where we are, we are twenty steps from the courtrooms. Courtrooms one and two, the District Court and Superior Court. The proposed location is one hundred and thirty-five steps. That's not double, that's not triple, quadruple, quintu. It's more than six times as far. So whatever time it takes us to be out of court, and we don't, we don't have the luxury of having people sitting there, can you run, get this for me? We have to actually leave the courtroom ourselves. We are far safer and secure where we are now, on the second floor, with only two offices with windows versus the standalone structure that is the original courthouse. On the ground floor, with windows on every side, that is accessible to motor vehicles on three sides, including Warner Boulevard. Ask yourself this question. If it didn't make sense, why would the original design for the courthouse have us as close as we are now? Why change that? The proposed alternative use of our current space as a suite with offices for four judges frankly makes no sense. Each courtroom already has its own chambers or office for the judge holding court in that particular courtroom. There is only one judge from Lee County, and he already has his own separate office. The grand jury can meet in the jury room of the original courthouse. This only occurs one day out of the month. Typically, starting at ten AM, first Monday of Superior Court, and lasting until about lunchtime, two to three hours. Pented jurors, also known as trial jurors, are scheduled one week a month. They can be oriented as well in the original Superior courtroom. Larger pools of jurors, such as those who report for capital cases and death penalty cases, are assembled in the original Superior courtroom already. Once selected, a jury that hears a case reports to the jury room for that courtroom, so there would not need, be any need for them to crisscross. For both types of jurors being over in the original courthouse, would have the added benefit of having access to their cell phones so they can stay in contact with their family and friends, as well as other banned electronic devices that would help them pass the time while they are serving. Our job extends past the eight to five, Monday through Friday, that we are available to the public. Our folks often arrive early and leave late, as well as come in on the weekends. There will be no bailiff or security staff to us, to see us as we come and go, or stay and work after hours. It is our understanding that the magistrates have reduced public access now because of safety concerns. This is in spite of the fact that the magistrates are located one door away from the jail and the security resources they have. How are we to feel having to go to a separate building multiple times a day? As an Assistant District Attorney, it is our responsibility to be professional and to not make things personal. However, it is our duty to take tough positions. We ask that bonds be revoked, people be sent to prison, and even be put to death. To be able to do this without concerns for our personal safety is critical and just plain basic. In my career, I've had the uncomfortable experience of being threatened outside of the courtroom for a position I had taken in the courtroom. I'd arrived at work one morning and parallel parked with a car that was in front of me and a car that was behind me. Before I could get out of my car, another car pulled up right beside me where I couldn't open my door. The other driver, who had been in my courtroom the day before, began yelling at me, "Talk big damn," multiple times, in a very angry and agitated voice. I had no idea whether this misdemeanor defended, and again, that's the lowest level offense we deal with. Was armed, but I knew this, he had taken the time and the trouble to find me, and he had me trapped. I remind all of you of the shooting that occurred in our very own courthouse parking lot within the last several years. And the fact that a security sweep has to be performed every day for weapons that have either been left or stashed outside of the courthouse. One of the things we would very much like to know is where do we go from here? In terms of what is the process and when will a decision be made? And so if, if we could know that, we would certainly, uh, we'd like to, um, stay connected with this process and, and be made aware. And I would extend an invitation, some of you have taken this up before. Uh, Mr. Sharpe, you certainly work within the system, you're well aware, but, if you have not been to our office to see what we are talking about, please take the time and come by and see us. In closing, I would tell you that it's our job to make Lee County as safe as possible. All that we ask of you is that you keep us safe while we do our jobs. Thank you for this opportunity again.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
I'll set this up for y'all first.
Sure.
Okay, so this is a blown-up plant, or blown-up poster of the proposed plans as they are now.
Can you just state your name for the record? And for the people listening?
So, I'm Deirdre Stevenson, I'm an attorney here in Stanford, and I'm the elected president of the Lee County Bar.
Thank you.
So the bar is, um, the attorneys who don't work for the government. Thank you, Commissioner, I apologize for that. Um, so Mr. Stewart brought up a number of incidences where DAs or ADAs were assaulted outside of their homes earlier when he first spoke to you. So since we're taking attendance today, can the DA or the ADAs who live in county, in Lee County, please stand up? How about in the district?
We have another that's outside.
Yeah, we have, Mr. Bean, who's a local resident here. Here's my to come in and talk.
So, since the DA's office has been talking about risk, let's talk about risk, risk solutions with this plan. Let's talk about risk solutions. Why can't we construct a breezeway that's enclosed between the old courthouse and the new? Or since the DA's office has put so much weight on the Sheriff's Department, why don't they trust them to come up with a security plan for the new renovations? Um, Mr. Autry and Mr. Beam, um, spoke about how much staff they employ. So if they have so much staff, why can't they, um, set up escorts, which the Sheriff's Department has already stated that they'd be willing to do for all the ADAs and the victims? So if they have so much staff, why can't they set those escorts up? Or do they not trust the Sheriff's Department to come up with a security plan? All that the private Lee County Bar is asking for is adequate space. We've heard about risk, and we've heard about insufficient space. We all need more space, and people are moving to central North Carolina in droves. What that brings is more speeding tickets, yes, more crime. What does it also bring? More children, more divorces, more family law court. You've heard a lot of emotional pleas today, but let me give you some statistics. The following are statistics taken from a twenty-eight issue of the American Bar Association Journal. Family law lawyers consistently have higher rates of threats of violence, and they have higher rates of actual assaults. Family law attorneys deal with divorces, child custody. Um, the survey that was taken from this issue also states that criminal defense attorneys have also reported an above-average rate of threats and violence, as do lawyers who do general practice, which can include many areas. But family law's work is civil, and it is emotional. And ninety-two point eight percent of the attorneys polled in that 2018 survey experienced some kind of threat, violence, or actual harm. Also, we've heard a number of people speak about the shooting, and they recounted it to you, that occurred at the Lee County courthouse. That shooting was a result of a domestic case, which is family law. So, um, back to what we were saying. So, the DA's office has consistently expanded and taken over since the construction of our new courthouse. They have acquired six of the conference rooms. The ones that are left for us are too small, or that we're not able to access them easily. We essentially have no law library, which is required by North Carolina statute, or a lawyer's lounge to speak of. They've been combined, and under that state statute, the law library, law library must be available to the public. I have for you those blown-up plans, um, the, the proposed plans for the renovations. The DA's office still has space, and you can see it in orange in that upper right-hand corner. With the changes that we've proposed, we're also, we also want the DA's office to have more space to be able to work with those criminal attorneys. It's not an us-versus-them situation, it's we all need more space, and we don't have enough money for a new courthouse. The private bar is concerned about confidentiality and safety for our clients and us as well. We need adequate conference rooms that do not violate the public's rights or privileges. After all, the courthouse is a space for the public, and we are not able to speak to them in confidence without them, without the other opposing party hearing what we're discussing in that open foyer. So, if I may, I've never found one of these before. So, we are proposing that the DA's office does move to the old courthouse. Of course, we want everyone to be safe, the Sheriff's Department has already said that they'd be willing to work with us on that. Here is the DA, DA office's proposed space right now. We believe we can get them more space. One of the DAs, um, or ADAs, excuse me, earlier mentioned that we don't need all of this judicial that you see here in the yellow. We agree, the, the Lee County Bar agrees with them completely. Our proposed changes will give the DA's office more space to run those records that they mentioned that are so important, and we believe we'd be able to work with, or they would be able to work with the Sheriff's Office to protect them. So, I know you all can't see it, but if you follow these changes, which the Lee County Bar is proposing, we believe that the DA's office will have enough space in the current new courthouse, as well as all of the space that they need across the way. And if you would like me to list these off, I could explain that. There are, there are North Carolina ethical rules for attorneys that say that we must keep our conversations with clients confidential. Especially in domestic court, the judges ask that we take our clients outside and try and reach a settlement or a resolution before coming back in. Being in that giant foyer that looks at the old courthouse does not afford us that. And that's where a number of the fights have broken out, um, because people are crammed into that room. These renovations were brought about to control the flow of safety and the traffic. Um, and so we believe that this proposed, these proposed plans, along with our changes, that reaches that goal, um, in the most cost-efficient and efficient manner.
Deidra?
Yes.
Can you take pictures of that?
Yeah, well, I was going to take it.
I can send you all, uh, so if you want a list of our proposed changes to these plans, we don't need all that judicial space, as the DA's office was saying. Um, we only have one judge who truly needs an office here, and the judges want this jury, they want this jury assembly, and they've all told us that. So, if we get rid of a lot of this, we can make more space for the DA's office. What we're concerned about is being able to adequately give our clients legal advice with respecting the rules of, under North Carolina and the North Carolina law. So we can do away with most of this. If you combine judicial reception and judicial assistance, take out all the offices minus one, you would, you would get most of the space back, and the DA's office can have it. But that's all right with Madler. So, we also are proposing that we would change these chambers. These chambers here don't make any sense. I don't know how often you spend time in a courtroom, but here, you would have the judge getting off the bench and walking down through the open court. So if you- So, if you switch that over, this room, as it is right now, is probably one of the most used courtrooms in the courthouse. And I think the ADAs, the DA's office, and the Lee County Bar would agree with that. That's where the wheel of dealing happens. So, we really need to preserve this room for the DA's office and for the Lee County Bar. We're asking that we get more conference rooms that are easily accessible, so that we can discuss with our attorneys, or our clients, excuse me, in confidence and privately. Here's the security office. We're proposing that we take some of this unused, unneeded, and frankly, unsafe space and put more conference rooms here. If we take away all of this judicial, we could put the attorney lounge and the law library, law library over here. The DA's office could have all of this. Or, if they want to be on the criminal side, they could do that, too. What we're asking for is more space for our clients when we're making those decisions and giving them that sacred confidential advice that the judges are asking us to do when they ask us to leave the courtroom and go consult with our clients. As I mentioned earlier, the judges said that it's unsafe for the jurors, the jurors to be kept in the old courtroom, and there's about 80 to 100 jurors that you would be moving from the old courthouse to the new. I think it would be a lot more efficient to have the Sheriff's Department be contacted by one of the numerous staff that the DA's office has to escort them and the victims back over. Or, we could build a breezeway. I think that there are more risk solutions versus fear tactics that we could talk about. And that's our position today. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stevenson.
Good evening. My name is Suzy Thomas. I'm the elected clerk of court. I'm not here to contest anything the DA's office has said. We've got to work together as a group. I'm here for the citizens of Lee County, not for the clerk's office, not for the DAs. I'm here for the public. I serve the citizens of Lee County, not the DA's office, not my staff. I heard, I think it was Mr. Beam, talked about the efficiency of the courts by moving the jury room over to courtroom, or the old courthouse. Yes, I do jury orientation over there for capital murder cases, because I have 100 jurors. My jury room seats about 45. Starbuck's been there, we were packed. I need a bigger jury room, that's what I asked for, a jury room with 100. It takes about 45 minutes for me to walk jurors from the old courthouse over to the new courthouse to get them into a courtroom. You want to talk about efficiency, that's 45 minutes. The DA, the victims, everyone is sitting in court waiting for me to walk jurors over from the old courthouse to the new courthouse. They talk about bringing in cell phones, Mr. Beam talked about the jurors having their cell phones, electronic devices in the old courthouse. What are they going to do with their phones when they leave that old courthouse, come over to the new courthouse where there's no electronics, no cell phones allowed? We talk about jurors, and Mr. Beam made a comment, jurors were summoned once a month. That is not true. Yes, there are summonings once a month for criminal. I have civil district, and I have civil superior that I also have jurors summoned for. I didn't bring a schedule, didn't realize we were going to get this deep into it. But like I said, they're not just summons for criminal court, they're also summons for civil, superior, and civil district. Usually with jurors, I have between 50 and 75 jurors that show up on any given jury session. At the end of the day, basically, it's safety for the jurors as well as the DA and their victims. You've got jurors on a capital murder case, you're trotting the jurors across the breezeway just like you would victims. At least if the jurors are, in the new courthouse, they're coming from the back, from the jury room, straight into the courtroom. They're not walking by the victim's family, they're not walking by the defendant's families. If you have the victim, the victims is secured in the DA's office. They're not there where the defendants are. The defendants are not going to go into the DA's office when they're represented by an attorney. Your victim is going to be in the DA's office, and your defendant's going to normally be sitting in the courtroom before that judge. And we did have a meeting, Starbuck, I'm not sure who it was, about two years ago. It's been, you know, two years ago when we had a meeting, and everything that came out of that meeting was the DA's office wanted to be separate and apart from the courtroom, separate and apart from the defendants, separate and apart from the jurors. Well, to separate them would be to move them to the old courthouse, they would be separate and apart from everyone. And at that meeting, it did come up that they would escort them over to the court. If they gave them a time, they would escort them over to the courthouse. And I agree with the bar. No, we do not need all the judicial conference rooms, we don't need the work area. I do not want to see the law library moved back to where the judicial conference rooms are. Number one, Judge Love is going to try to be here, and he got held up in Johnston County. He wants to make this a secure area. The law library is open to the public by statute, so if you put the law library back over here, you're opening that back up to the public to enter that location again. They talk about security, working late, working weekends, there's, you know, they say there's no bailiffs available. There's no bailiffs available now when they work at the courthouse, the new courthouse. The only person in that courthouse is the magistrate. So, depending on how they come and go, the magistrate may know they're there, but there's no bailiff for security. So, basically, that's all I'd like to say, is I just think at the end of the day, it's the comfort and security of the citizens of Lee County. Thank you.
Do I have, have we heard from everybody? Okay, thank you. I just didn't want to miss anybody. Okay? Discussion or questions or comment?
I'll go ahead and answer a couple of questions that came up. That way, the commissioners would, some questions come up. We did have the architect contact the historic commission in Raleigh about connecting the two buildings through the breezeway is, would not be approved. The architectural integrity of the backside, well, I'll call it the backside that faces the new courthouse, does have four gigantic pillars there, and they would, we would not get approved to attach there. So, that's not an option for us, unfortunately. So, yes, there's going to be a breezeway there. My discussions with Judge Love, and I did get a phone call from Judge Gilchrist today, their number one issue is the integrity of the juries and trying to create as much security for them as we possibly can. Also, when I met with Judge Love, he already, you know, when they, when the judges filled out their questionnaire, they went, you know, to the 20-year look, and we're trying to anticipate the growth. And obviously, this area that was designed by the architect was to appease the judges. I've already spoken there, we can definitely shorten up that space there and create space there. But you still have issues where trying to keep the entire DA staff upstairs, give them the space that they need, accommodate the requests from the judges for the jury, it just, trying to put a square peg in a round hole, and it doesn't work. So, we have space, it just isn't where everybody wants it. I'm a little concerned about the comments about security. It's not, as I was talking to the chairman earlier today, the number one concern of our employees, even in this building, in any building in town, is security. So, you know, it just seems to be a trend with public employees. I've been threatened, Mr. Bean. My family has been threatened in my position, and it's not fun. I understand that. So, I don't know the answer to that, except we just try to do the best we can. And in this situation, it's not an easy one. And so, I'll be happy to answer questions from the board about the design. There are some name changes that need to be done, and some rooms that need to be flipped, but before I put the architect back to work, you know, I need to understand where we were going. Because I didn't want to spend money that we wouldn't get a return back on. We didn't hear from the register of the deeds, so let me go ahead, we'll go ahead and talk about the one good thing. We have a couple of changes to make to her plan and with the architect, and then we're ready to go to construction documents for what she needs to have done. And she is a willing participant to move, so that is one piece that will work.
That's a good start, isn't it?
Questions? Come in.
How long have we been dealing with this? I've lost track.
We were supposed to have a meeting with y'all in April 2018.
Yeah, the district attorney's original request was probably about three years old, and he's continued to add staff over that time, so.
Some of it statutorily required.
Well, I understand, and I mean, you know, it shows the growth of the county, despite what the state says about our population. We see growth in the county, quite a bit of growth, so there's a lot of growth in his department. There's growth in the clerk's department. We, you know, I agree with the attorneys. There's, when you go and you visit the courthouse and you see an attorney consulting a client in that open area, you know that that's not good for the process. They need to have places. But like I said, we're, you know, we're kind of confined there in space and in that area. It's a difficult design to try to fix the problem, and it's not an easy one.
Well, I just, I'd just like to say, I mean, and it may seem that I'm a little biased, having been in law enforcement 15 years, but, you know, having heard from Mr. Beam and Chris, I mean, safety, you know, that is obviously the number one priority. They overwhelmingly want to stay where they're at. Obviously, a breezeway is out of the question, so that can't be done. But I understand, though, Mr. Crumpton, that you're right, trying to, you know, square a peg in a round hole, it's still a difficult problem there. But it appears to me that in spite of, in spite of that, they're willing to, I don't know if the right word stays, put up with the space that they currently have, to have the safety that they have, but it seems like the, as far as safety goes, staying where they're at is the lesser of two evils. But I understand, with all due respect, that something's got to be done one way or the other, and, but I'm in support of them just staying where they're at. And I mean, it's a no-brainer for me as far as the safety part goes with, you know, the victims potentially being paraded in proximity of defendants or defendants' families, you know, records having to be going back and forth. I mean, it didn't take a lot of convincing from me, but then, once again, you know, I know what they do, and I understand that part of it, and I'm sure Cameron does, too, and he may have some comments on it, but it's kind of, that's my stand on it, is I support them staying where they're at.
I'm in a position, I don't see where I can win either way. But, but I do see, I see some, I do see some safety concerns, but I work with all these people, and we need to work, you know, we need to look at this to make it as safe as possible, and I just think that we need to rehash this thing.
You mean, you're talking about rehashing after three years, you're talking about rehashing again?
Yeah, so what's four?
Like five?
What's one more?
What's one more year?
Yeah.
I will have to go back to the architects and spend that money.
I don't even know if I want to address that question. What's one more year?
Well, it took three, it took three to get nowhere.
I heard, no, you can guess somewhere, you just had to make a decision. But the president of the bar made one that was very clear to me. We don't have enough money to do all the things that we need to do, and this board needs to understand. You know, it's unfortunate that we can't satisfy everybody, but this is not about trying to take care and make sure everybody's happy. This is about doing what's best for this county financially and safety. We can't stop some of the mental illness of mean people worldwide. You can't regulate craziness. You can't predict it. If you did, you could, we'd all be safer, but you can't. And you can't keep postponing things to accommodate more time, to give more thought. I find it somewhat concerning that we're spending as much time trying to make a decision on a plan. Well, I always do it two ways. If this doesn't happen, I need the plan for what will be. We ought to have a plan that shows us if we have to make the changes that we're talking about, here's what we're going to do to increase and improve safety. That should be accommodating the original plan, regardless of which way we go. That should have been looked at, in my opinion. And that's what I would support, finding out if we make the changes that, well, let me first ask the manager, what is the recommendation?
Well, this was what was recommended by the architect, but in the immediate thing, I agree, we have bond money we need to move forward with. There is a time limit on that, or before we start paying arbitrage penalties and that kind of stuff. So, to get things moving, I would ask the board to go ahead and approve me going ahead and working with the architect to get the construction drawings for the fireplace building, and then begin work as soon as the register of deeds leaves and doing something with that space. You can create a little bit of space for the district attorney by moving the attorney lounge and law library over to where the register of deeds is at this point, and we can come back around there and take the rest of that backspace. But you still don't address the issue of the jury pool. You just keep prolonging, you know, doing something with that. It's a temporary fix, but, you know, and then think about it long-term. If somebody does move to the, whether it's the jury that goes over to the historic courthouse or the district attorney goes over there, the way we do security or the sheriff does security has got to change. They have to have a bigger presence in the historic courthouse. I mean, we just can't have people roaming the hallway and being able to go up to courtroom four without knowing what's going on. He'll have to have more people. I mean, I think that's a foregone conclusion in all this, and they have to put metal detectors over there as well. So, a lot, no matter what happens, you know, we have to do, we'll have to do something. The long-term plan is in the CIP. I was surprised no one spoke about that, that was here, you know, building a new judicial center, but had all these people in here who could have stepped up to the mic and said, y'all need to do this as soon as possible, but they missed it.
And we opened that back up. This is my first time I've told you guys.
That's okay, but we know how important it is. But we have, we have other, other folks coming to us for a lot of money as well, and it, once again, that shows the growth in the county. You have a lot of quality of life issues that people want us to address. We have courthouse issues that need to be addressed, school issues, you name it, growth, growth is coming, and we're going to have to be ready to address those issues.
There's probably not a person sitting in here who does not know someone who was afraid to go to church at times because of what's going on. Our kids are afraid to go to school sometimes because of what's going. You cannot dodge everything. You have to take steps to move forward, figure out as best you can as you move forward. But we can't keep sitting on this, this space problem. Make a decision, we certainly can't afford, not with the numbers I heard at the last meeting, in terms of what, what we might have to spend in schools again in a couple of years. You can't keep jacking up the rate to take care of desires of everybody you come in contact with. You have to make a decision. And for that reason, I'll move to approve the recommendation of the architect and the county manager. And vote your conscience.
For the entire plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
Are you saying?
Vote yea, that is to proceed with.
Yes, for the recommended plan by the architect.
To move the DA's office over.
And we're definitely in agreement that the sheriff will have to come up with a safe, a security plan.
Either way, he will have to.
Well, if you're sitting on top of the sheriff's building, and they're all around, and you're still afraid, we really got problems. We really got problems. We really got problems. When people attack police departments, you, you can't control those kind of people. You can't. They do that even when you put them away sometimes. We have to and need to move forward.
Okay.
Let me say one more thing.
Sure.
Personally, I worked there, but I feel for the, you know, the ladies, you know, that have to walk through those parts.
I feel for the men.
Well, I mean, I walk there every day.
I understand.
So, anyway, that's all I'll say.
I'm not unsympathetic.
Sure.
I do know that sometimes you have to make a decision whether you want to be somewhere or not. And if you're afraid every day, then you probably shouldn't be there.
Well, let me go. I'm not afraid.
I didn't say you.
I'm not afraid.
I didn't say you.
I'm afraid for them, right.
I said if an individual goes to a job site or goes anywhere that they're afraid all the time, they shouldn't go there. That's all I mean.
I don't, I can't read all these little changes here.
Yeah. I could list them out for you.
Well, that's, that's okay. Are you going to get that? Are you also going to present it? I don't think there's major changes on there, but there may be some proposals that may help.
No, and I have, we have suggested changes. I have, I have, you know, I'm developing a list that we'll meet with the architect before we go to construction drawings.
That's what I'm asking. Can you still look at all that? Thank you.
I just, is this something that has to be voted on today? I mean, I know there's been a movement to vote on it, but before it was an information presentation, is this something we absolutely have to vote on right now?
I had a motion.
There's a motion on the floor?
Mr. Crumpton, is the main, let me ask you just one thing. As far as space, needed space, moving over to the old courthouse, is that for the benefit of the district attorney's office?
Yes.
As he, as he says, you know, growth, you know, we, we're going to continue to have issues.
True, true, true.
Not just with his department either.
What they're telling me tonight is, in spite of that, they still prefer to stay where they're at. And I'm assuming because of overall safety issues.
But it's not just one, one section of people. There are other folks who have the same concerns about safety and...
And, and I'm thinking about the citizens and the victims in that, between both of those buildings going back and forth. And I, and like I said, I, you know, it's, it's, it's tough. Because you're going to have growth, we're going to continue to grow. But they're telling me they're, they're happy where they're at, because as far as a safety scenario, for safety of all concern, including the MN citizens, they're, they're far more safe, the argument that I heard, where they're at now, as opposed to moving across the street. That's all I got to say.
Commissioner Smith, before I say anything, you want to weigh in on?
I hope that John's taking good notes on the additional recommendations there.
We've got a, a motion on the floor, but before we do that, I, I just would ask everybody to just sort of take a breath. And this is a serious issue. It's one that the manager and I have been dealing with for about three years now. And, and how we got to tonight is our DA, Mr. Stewart, contacted the manager and wanted to see us. And we went and met with him. I think the clerk was there, Judge Gilchrist was there. And, and the DA's office expressed concerns that they had run out of space. And they asked for our help. They were very firm in their demands that they needed more space. And at that time, we did our jobs, and the manager contacted an architectural firm. Those of you that were on the board at that time, they went through. And I mean, we all have copies of it in our agenda where each entity, whether it was the clerk's office, register of deeds, the sheriff, the DA's office, the attorneys, you know, every, everybody had the opportunity to weigh in with the architects. They were interviewed by them, they put things in writing. The manager and I met with the different groups. And we all tried to come to the best resolution that we could. And I'm not an architect. They know what walls can be moved, they know with historical buildings what you can and cannot do with them. So in the end, what we have before us in our agenda packet is the best plan that we could come up with. It is a tough decision. But one thing I would say to everybody, and the manager referenced it earlier, in our CIP, our capital improvements plan for the next five years, we have a new judicial center in that plan. We have said from the beginning, this is not a permanent fix. This is a Band-Aid until we can get the permanent fix in place. One of the concerns that, that I have, and it's, it's made my decision easy, is I have served on juries in Lee County. I know what it's like to go through the jury process, to be selected, and, and to do that civic duty. I am an elected county commissioner, and my first responsibility is the safety and the security of the citizens in this county. And a juror is compelled, they are summoned to serve on a jury. They do not have a choice. If they are able, they are compelled to that service. Everyone else in that building is there by choice. I have a lot of faith in our sheriff, and I think that what we decide to do, wherever our different departments are, he and his staff can do a good job of keeping us safe. And to Commissioner Reeves' point, it, it's sometimes, it is a dangerous world we live in. And that's why it's even more important that we all work together. We need to have each other's backs, rather than pointing fingers at each other and trying to, to pit each other. That, that's the thing that's bothered me a lot through this whole process, especially the last few weeks, is instead of coming together and working for solutions on this, there have been movements afoot to try to pit one set of people against another. We're better than that. We are better than that. So at this time, I'll call for the...
Just one, I think, you know, we have plans for the future. We've already purchased land or courthouse for that future. So we've already made steps to look forward, to, to, to make the appropriate changes for the long term, so we're not, we spent a lot of money on that.
Right, and that's, that's a great point.
We spent a lot of money on that, we spent a lot of money on this plan.
Right.
You know, quite honestly, if you, if we were going to just go round and round and back and forth, then there was no sense in hiring or spending that sixty or seventy thousand dollars to get an architect down here. We could have just gone through this process and, and saved the money.
Yep.
You know, anything that we do regarding safety is going to cost this county. I have great expectation that the sheriff understood when he made his, gave his support letter, that if it didn't work out, he's going to have to figure out a way to do a little bit more, and he'll be before this board or send somebody before this board to ask for more money to do those things. It's going to cost to provide the space for the people you need, notwithstanding the fact that the general assembly and the Department of Justice will send people down here based on what the law says we need. And they won't ask you if you've got enough space. They'll tell you to find enough space. I know it's not easy, but you've got to get started at some point.
The main thing is we, we, for the, we've made plans to change this for the long term. We really look forward, I mean ahead, which was a good plan.
All right.
Right, because just to run, you know, when, when this started, it took a while, but we purchased the old bowling alley building.
Correct.
And Commissioner Sharp's office, you know, very kindly, you know, moved, moved over there that created space in the historic courthouse. And then the register of deeds is moving over into the old firehouse.
Without fussing.
The, sir?
I said, without fussing.
Yeah, well, things, things take time, and they're cruel sometimes. But, but again, I, I don't think it's this board's intention that the architect's proposal is a permanent solution. It is a short-term solution. And, and we've purchased the land and made moves with other departments to get to that permanent solution. Commissioner Smith?
I'm sorry?
I don't know, that's fine.
She has a homework assignment.
Did you, did you want to say something?
I just wanted, sorry, if I can just clarify to make sure I have it correct in the record. The motion is that the board accept the recommended plan as presented by the architect, with proposed changes or without proposed changes, or, or just the plan, and Mr. Crumpton or Crumpton's taking notes of the changes.
Well, if those are presented, that's all.
I, I think we start out with the architectural plans and amend them as we move forward in the process.
Yeah, so at least if he sees them, he might go, oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
And, and then also, you know, talking with the sheriff. I mean, I, I even, you know, I, I was taking notes and, and listening to everybody, and I have my own list based, based on the concerns of the DA's office, you know, some of the things that we could do at the historic courthouse that I don't remember seeing on the plan. So, you know, those can be incorporated.
Well, the things we see here, some of these changes here, we didn't know about.
Sure.
But you start with something that you've already paid for, and then amend it accordingly.
So the alternative to not going with this plan is just not, is nothing? Things just being the way that they are?
It's wasting sixty or seventy thousand dollars is what it is. That's about it.
Well, we also have three million dollars in bond money that was committed to this project.
That we can try and keep under budget and do these, make some of these changes we're talking about.
Yeah.
Call the question.
Okay, call the question. Okay, all those, is everybody clear on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to our next agenda item.
Let me take that.
Okay, let's, yeah, with everybody moving around, let's take about a ten-minute recess. We've got people out in the hall, we need to switch off.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 With the consideration to transfer property.
Yes, so this is property located on West Forest Oaks Drive. The pin is nine six six seven eight seven eight four seven seven. This was the parcel that we received two bids. The board accepted the offer of $4,000 from Mr. Mike Jones. He had paid the advertising cost and the 5% deposit. The property is landlocked, he's aware of that, I believe he's in the process of purchasing the land surrounding it. He, at the March 18th, regular board meeting, the board voted to declare the property surplus. We did run the advertisement on March 27th, 2019. No one submitted an upset bid. At this time, if the board chooses, it can authorize staff to effectuate the transfer of the property and authorize the chair to sign any related paperwork. He has reached out to an attorney, and attorney has contacted me for him, I think he's ready to move forward once the board makes a vote.
I've moved to approve that we move forward.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And then on page 151 of your agenda, the amendment to the nonprofit policy that we discussed earlier.
So, the Board of Commissioners adopted the policy for nonprofit funding and an agreement that goes along with it back in February of 2011. This I brought to the board as a result of the vote that took place on March 18th at the regular board meeting, when the board voted to amend the policy to include that any concerns or requests from the commissioners should be addressed in a timely fashion. In the policy and the amendment, you'll see in highlight, just some other proposed wording that just makes it clear for both the nonprofits and the board as to what the expectations would be moving forward. And I believe we would be able to implement this agreement with any nonprofit funding if the board adopts that in this, in the next fiscal year's budget.
Right. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, sir.
I think this is one of your...
It is, and I would recommend approval. I did have a couple of notes, one of them is on page, is on page 156, I think, I'm sorry, 154. And it's a judgmental consideration, but it's, it's in the third paragraph in the last sentence. It talks about changes it may have on the county's funding and/or the services being provided for our citizens. If it impacts the service or the community, then yeah, we need to know that as well.
So you'd want it to read, if during the fiscal year it receives funding, there's a major operational change of the structure of the organization, the organization must notify the county and be available to provide an update as to how the change may affect the organization as a whole, or any changes it may have on the county's funding and/or services provided?
Being provided.
And/or services.
Yeah, the organization could have a different problem altogether, but stops the services out in the community. And the other one...
That makes sense, because you're saying you're changing the service, but we're still giving you money for the service for.
Right. And the other one, I think, is on page 156. If the agency fails to comply, funding can be terminated for the remainder of the year, and the agency will reimburse. I think I would support, may be required to reimburse, because I don't know what the circumstances might have been.
Which number is this one?
Five.
I'm sorry, number five, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, to say can be terminated for the remainder of the year and the agency...
It says, right now it says will reimburse. If they have a legitimate reason.
Kind of like a case by case.
Could be required to reimburse.
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
Or may be required, either way.
Okay.
And then...
May be required, okay.
Yeah. Then the other one is just, being repetitive, number six in the last, I just attach "and services."
Right, okay.
So. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good call. Any more questions, or additions, deletions? Rework? Okay.
Madam Chair, move to approve the changes as made and noted
Okay.
in our volunteer or nonprofit policy.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right? Okay, presentation on Medicaid transformation. I feel like I need some kind of dire music for this one. Commissioner Smith knows what I'm talking about.
It's right here. That's all right, I'll fix it.
Okay, good evening again. So the purpose of today was just to give you a high-level overview of Medicaid transformation. If you recall, Ms. Witt from Sandhills came to the board, and she gave her annual presentation, and she kind of did a touch on what Medicaid transformation is from the behavioral health, LME, MCO, local management entity aspect. So my goal today is just to give a high-level overview of Medicaid transformation, kind of how it will impact, and what does it mean for Lee County. And so just a refresher, session law, 2015-245 directs DHHS to transition to a managed care for physical health for Medicaid. It moves the system to a capitated model, and allows private for-profit companies to bid on Medicaid contracts. And so this is a lot like what the model that we have currently in our mental health system. So they are a capitated model, they get paid a certain amount for individuals that they're in their cash flow area, and they're required to provide all of the services for behavioral health needs of their, the folks that they serve with that, that funding. So currently, for physical health needs, meaning physical health and pharmacy care, current Medicaid structure is what we call fee-for-service. So if an individual receives Medicaid, they go to a doctor. The doctor is enrolled with Medicaid, chooses to accept Medicaid, and they bill directly for those services, and they get paid directly for those services. That's what we call fee-for-service structure. And so with this change, many Medicaid eligible categories are now transitioned from fee-for-service to managed care plans that will now be referred to as prepaid health plans, or PHPs. It is still a managed care structure, however, we, they used PHPs versus MCOs is because individuals in our field use MCOs. They equate that with behavioral health needs and Sandhills Center, your LME/MCO model. So there, with this transition, there's going to be three different plan options, depending on the category of services that they receive, the beneficiary receives. So certain individuals will still remain fee-for-service. So if individuals are receiving what we, so examples are limited Medicaid coverage, family planning services, if we have individuals that are receiving just because they're able to meet a deductible, there are certain, certain programs that are excluded from this legislation and will remain fee-for-service. So they will remain in the model where they go to the doctor, they, they have a doctor, they go to the doctor, the doctor direct bills Medicaid for those services. Okay, sorry. The second option would be standard plan option. So this is what we're, we're calling that managed care model for the majority of our beneficiaries. What will happen is, the DHHS estimates for Lee County in particular, that 11,737 Medicaid beneficiaries will transition now to what we call a standard plan. And so those individuals will receive all of their physical health needs and their non-emergency Medicaid transportation, as well as your pharmacy services through your PHP providers. So my personal opinion is that that estimate seems a little high. We have currently about 15,000, a little over 15,000 individuals in Lee County that are Medicaid beneficiaries. This is what DHHS gave to us that they believe will transition to the standard plans. Now, the big change with these standard plans is that individuals will also receive their mild to moderate behavioral health needs with standard plans as well. So we'll be look, the state will be looking at the diagnosis of the individual to see, do they fall in standard health plans, or do they fall in tailored plan options? And so Ms. Witt really did an excellent job of kind of thoroughly explaining tailored plan options. So this will be designed to serve special needs individuals with intellectual disabilities, ADD, substance use disorder, and individuals with moderate to severe behavioral health needs. So individuals say if they have a diagnosis of schizophrenia, they will, in July 2021, will be man, will be served by your LME/MCO Sandhills Center. So a little bit of significant dates for Lee County. And I apologize, I made this slide a month or so ago, thinking that April 2019, we were going to be, they were going, they, DHHS was going to begin mailings to beneficiaries to start the process of educating folks. I don't believe that's occurred, I believe that kind of got postponed, which we're in rollout.
That sounds familiar, doesn't it, postponing?
But we're in rollout too, which doesn't begin until February 2020. So event, they're supposed to provide their marketing material to us, so that we know what beneficiaries are receiving. July 2019, the PHP, the prepaid health plan, call centers must be by legislation, operational in Raleigh. So this is your enrollment broker, and Ms. Witt discussed that a little bit, Maximus Scott, the bid for the enrollment broker. And they're the ones that are going to be responsible for taking the calls, educating individuals on what plans, and enrolling those individuals in a plan that are mandatory for enrollment. So October 2019 through December 2019 is going to be what we call an open enrollment period. So that's the time when individuals must call that enrollment broker, Maximus, and select a prepaid health plan. December 16th, 2019, if an individual doesn't select a plan, they're going to be auto-enrolled. And so what the system will do is it will take into consideration who used to be their provider, and what PHPs, what provider those PHPs are enrolled with, in considering who to auto-enroll them. And through this auto-enrollment process, they're going to regulate, kind of regulate the amount of individuals that are enrolled in each PHP, to kind of make it level across the board. So February 2020 is when Lee County will go live?
I'm sorry, I was looking at December 16th, the auto-enrollment occurs. If that person doesn't register, and it goes to automatic enrollment, but later on finds they have particular needs that were not identified, what's, is there a quick process to fix it, or?
So there, there, I don't have a specific answer to that question yet. However, they told us that there will be a time period that they will allow that individual 90 days to change. But even if it takes longer than 90 days, there's supposed to be a process in place that they can make an argument
Right.
to DHHS staff in saying why they need this change.
I just like the expression, how important it is to know what you're doing and not just to lay back.
Right.
All right.
Absolutely. And then in July 2021 is when the tailored plan options. So hypothetically speaking, what's going to happen is individuals are going to be mandatory to go into standard plan effective February 2020, and then if they meet that tailored plan criteria, they will be transitioned into the, being served by the LME/MCOs. So the LME/MCOs will not, will no longer just serve behavioral health needs, they will also serve your behavioral health, your physical needs, your pharmacy cares, and your NEMT services, which is non-emergency Medicaid transportation. So I really liked this slide, and this is something that I added, and it's not your agenda packet, but kind of what's new, beneficiaries will be able to choose their own healthcare plan. Most, but not all people will be in managed care. And what hasn't changed, what will remain the same, is our eligibility rules for Medicaid are still the same. Some health services, treatment, supplies will be, same, I'm sorry, same health services, treatment, supplies will be covered. And the beneficiary, if they had a co-pay, it remains the same, so none of that will change. And beneficiaries will still, of course, report changes to DSS. And so specifically impacts to Lee County, of course, we will still be, DSS will still be the responsible party to determine eligibility. So we put them in an eligibility category based on what they're eligible for, and that's what determines on what plan they're, that they must go into. Of course, we talked about beneficiaries selecting an enrollment broker. It's really important, important to realize that the legislation requires it to be done by a neutral third party. So DSS cannot do that, can, what we plan on doing, as I talked to Kyle in IT, is to kind of do a warm handoff. If they call our office with questions, that we have a transfer button that automatically transfers them to that 1-800 number, so they don't, we don't have to give them the number, them hang up, and them have to call another number, we can just transfer them to that 1-800 number. To kind of hopefully try to make it as seamless as possible, because it is, this is going to be a very confusing time for beneficiaries. And so this is a big one. And so Lee County DSS will no longer be responsible, not just responsible, we cannot provide NEMT services for individuals who are in a standard or tailored plan, because we won't be reimbursed for it. So those PHP providers and/or those LME/MCOs, they will be responsible for all non-emergency Medicaid transportation. So if a transportation vendor wants to contract to get that work, they will have to contract with those transportation brokers, which will be Logisticare, National Medtrans, or OneCall, if they're interested in continuing to provide those services. So our cults will be impacted by this.
It'll be a bid process, I did find that out. You'll have to bid on those contracts.
Answer my question, thank you.
So, and then of course, we're going to have increased phone calls, walk-ins, trying to educate these individuals on these changes. And then, of course, NCFAST will have a new project that's just for managed care transfer, or Medicaid transformation. So we should be able to pull them up in the system right then and there, and we'll know based on an added screen if they're mandatory to be in a PHP, or a standard plan or tailored plan.
In those increased phone calls, will you have to ask additional staff, or will the state pay for anything that supports that?
So the, the good thing about Medicaid is that it is a 75% reimbursement rate, which is the, it's the highest one that we have in DSS. The hope is, is that this will be a very short timeframe, that we can manage the extra calls and phone calls. That would be my plan. I feel like, you know, well, we probably have to work some call time, yes, but I feel like we'll, we can manage the calls internally, since it is such a short timeframe, because once we get used to the new, the new way of doing business, hopefully it will get less and less each year. Because they'll, you only, you only select a PHP once, and then recertification will continue in that PHP. We would only change you, a beneficiary, if they selected to do so. So it's, it's a one-time, my, my, my hope is that this will be a one-time thing we can get through.
All right, I'm glad your board hired you.
I watch for that.
She's very good.
Sandra's laughing, because she did Medicaid for family and children for years, so she knows what it would take.
Oh, all right.
And so this is the neat thing, and this is the end of my presentation. What will now be allowed is something we've never done, because current, the way we're currently structured, it's prohibited to do so, but PHPs will be able to offer value-added benefits to their enrollees. So they can have specific tailored programs that if they're in that standard plan option, that they have access to, whether it be gym memberships, whether it be, one example, PHP provided that they've done in another state, is that cost savings that they have, they're only allowed a certain percentage of profit, so the rest they have to reinvest, and they have to describe how they provide those services to the beneficiaries that they assist. So one of them actually does shopping and cooking services for individuals like that have just had surgery, that they can use those benefits to healthy eat, because they don't have access to food. Doing money for rapid re, kind of like a rapid rehousing, GED services, all kinds of different things, but they didn't specify exactly what each one will do here in North Carolina. But I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Good job.
I, I will say, I'm honored to be on the board with Ms. Nywell, and she does a fantastic job, but I'll tell you, this, she's been walking us through this for, what, three months or so now? And I know at our last meeting, I won't call her by name, but one of our longer-serving employees in the department said this was the most impactful thing she's ever seen, as far as being complicated, and, I mean, you saw the numbers, and as you've said, you know, 11,737 does seem a little high, but I mean, according to the Census Bureau, there's 60,000 people in the county. So, you know, if it's 10,000, her department's got to go through those 10,000 folks and help them navigate through the system. So we're behind you, especially from October to December, for sure, but it's going to be something. Yeah, yeah. But maybe, we'll see. Can have a lot of advantages in the end, once we get used to it. Thank you very much.
She's next.
I know, I know. So now, she's going to present the MOU between DHHS and Lee County.
Okay, so I'll be much more brief on this topic. So before you have the, the new MOU between Lee County and DHHS, if you recall, I came back in June 2018, and really kind of explained more what the measures were, what the purpose of this was, and then we had some changes, and I think it was in November, to the, to the agreement, when I came back and presented those changes. So in your board packet, you'll see four documents. You'll see an MOU cover letter, a fact sheet that describes the actual measures in detail. It's an excellent, it's a well-put-together document that DHHS provided, kind of talks about the general statutes, or policy, or the federal requirements, where it comes from. And then you'll see the calendar year 2018 performance, based on 13 of 26 of the measures, as well as the new 25-page MOU document for fiscal year 1920. I will say, with the Lee County performance, the 13 of the 26 measures, I just want to make a note for child support. Looking at a calendar year is not a good thing for child support. One, is we look at a fiscal year measurement, two is we, it's continuous. You usually don't meet your child support measures until the end of the year. You're talking about collection rates, establishment rates, things like this. So when you look at a calendar year, of course, it's very skewed. You, you should be looking at poorer performance come in July, and then better performance come June, and so that, that's a little skewed. However, what you'll see is there's three significant changes, well, the most significant changes.
What page can we find that on?
It's towards the back, it's...
Yeah, that's 200.
So your page numbers are...
200.
Hundred and...
Goes up to 222.
Yeah, Angelina, these, is that what you're...
So I don't, I don't have...
The charts, okay.
I'm so sorry, but I don't have how y'all's...
215.
Yeah.
Would you like my copy?
Because the child support services grading is on page 216.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, and then
Yes, so...
Performance measures.
So if you look at 216, when you look at your measures, first of all, I'm, I'm, let me make sure you're on, yes. And so you'll see child support measure one, two, three, four, and five, from page 216 to 218. You'll, you'll look how, what the goal is. I'm not really sure how they said, is this goal on track or not? That's a little confusing for me. But it will talk, it will show you what the state average is, what our county performance was, and what the denominator, numerator that they use to, to measure that actual percentage. So, and that's why I say, like, for, the first measure is establishment. So we have an annual percentage that we have to meet, paternities established for children born out of wedlock. That's a perfect example. So our measure begins at the very beginning of the fiscal, fiscal year. So if you'll see, your, your county average is 90.44% in July 2018, was just the beginning of the fiscal year, and you'll see that it keeps increasing throughout the year. So if you're looking at a calendar year, your child support measures are very skewed, because we don't ever look at a calendar year, we always look at the fiscal year, and you should see progress throughout the end of the year, but you're, you're comparing two different fiscal years, is kind of my point on that. But that, the, I have validated these with the reports that they, that the state has provided, that these numbers are accurate, and these are what we are looking towards when we work to meet our goals. So the significant changes are Attachment 1 consists of 13 measures, which is child support, work first, food nutrition services, and energy. That is also where they, they actually showed us the performance for calendar year 2018. The reason why they broke this up in Attachment 1 is these are the only measures that they have reports available, and we have validated those reports. So they pulled those out in Attachment 1. Attachment 2 shows corrective action measures, which the language is still the same, it still talks about, the state has the ability to take control of your agency either part or in full. It also talks about withholding funds if a county does not comply with their performance goals. But Attachment 3 is the remaining 13 measures. They pulled those out, because one, they haven't provided us reports, so we can't validate the information, but two, those are more what our growth measures are going to be, because those are measures that aren't really timeliness, they are measures that, there's a lot that impacts our ability to meet those measures. For example, our placement stability is in foster care. They want less than 4.1 moves in a thousand-day period. However, when we have a child with mental health issues, you know that we're going to have multiple placement moves, because they blow out of placements. So that is the significant changes to the MOU. It is a 25-page legally binding document, and the purpose of it is supposed to be quality improvement, a continuous quality improvement plan. Some of these measures are very difficult to meet for counties, so that is supposed to be the goal. But I, I need to know from the board who you would recommend to enter into this, as it is a county agreement, not a DSS-specific agreement, and it talks about the withholding of state and federal funds.
The motion to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Yes, yes.
I move to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement on the memorandum of understanding with DHHS.
Not there was, not that there is a choice.
Well, there's always choice.
That falls on the vice chair, if the chairman is incapacitated.
No, in terms of signing.
I have a question here, who's next?
Yes.
On the agenda, so.
Okay, all right. But everything's gonna be great, because we have Ms. Nywell in charge, so we're, we're really optimistic. Okay, so the motion is for, I mean, it's on the MOU between DHHS and Lee County. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, the audit contract for fiscal year nineteen twenty, Ms. Minter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have before you the audit contract for fiscal year twenty thirty, excuse me, June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. This'll be our fifth year with Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams as our auditors, and as you can see here, we went out to bid in April of two thousand and fifteen, and you awarded them the five-year contract. The local government commission requires that contract audit counts be approved by the audit firm, the Board of Commissioners, and the LGC before the audit work can begin. You have attached the contract and the engagement letter from Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Ask that you approve that.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Minter, or a motion to approve?
So, no.
Okay, more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Okay, consider reduction of membership of Joint Environmental Affairs Board. Mr. Downey? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Page two forty-one of your packet, you should have a memo from me that kind of describes the request in front of you tonight. I would direct you, I won't go into the whole thing in brevity for you tonight, because you've got a long meeting. The middle of that, if you'll notice, there's a chart that kind of describes to you, right now, there are five appointments from the city, five appointments from the county, and one from Broadway for the Environmental, Joint Environmental Affairs Board. As you can see in that chart, we have four positions filled, one vacancy in the city, one position filled, and four vacancies in the county. We've had extreme difficulty ever since we lost quite a few folks who decided not to reapply in the summer of twenty seventeen. As a result of that, as indicated there, this is an eleven-member board. You may recall, when we re-merged the boards back with the city and the county a few years ago, we went from a seventeen-member board down to an eleven-member board, and we kind of let folks leave off of that through attrition. That worked well at first, but again, we had quite a loss of membership in July of twenty seventeen, and haven't had folks who've been willing to be reappointed and serve on that. So actually, at the request of the existing six members of the board, they asked that we bring this forward to all three jurisdictions to consider reducing that from the current eleven members down to seven. We felt like it might be easier for you collectively, with the city, with Broadway, to make those appointments with three from the city, three from the county, and one from Broadway, and that would make it a lot easier for us to get a quorum as well, because the difficulty with an eleven-member board, we have to have all six members present to get a quorum, which has been very challenging. And I'll pause there if there's questions. Page two forty-two is the actual bylaws, and what I have highlighted at the bottom of page one there is the change that we would propose that you could consider. I would add, because the membership was mainly the issue with the county, I did go to Broadway and the City of Sanford first with this, and they were fine with this change, but I thought I'd bring it to you last, if there's questions.
Any questions, discussion, or motion?
I move to approve.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
One quick question.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any alternates, or do you need alternates?
We have not. We've never had alternates in the past. What this will hopefully do is just give us more flexibility. For example, we have three folks who are up from the city, if all three are to reapply, what we could do is direct one of those to actually apply with you all through the county, and then that way, we could kind of-
You should still have some positions for alternates open, I think, just in case-
Yeah, that's what I was, I was about to amend my own motion, just to say, let's at least have one, or two, if you think that's alternate.
You don't need to be filled, you're gonna have as many as you like, but at least, you know, you never know, you might get a rush on, right? More people that are willing to go hang out.
We certainly, you know, pleasure the board, we could do that. If we did, all of a sudden, get a lot of interest, we could always come back and have that too, but, I mean, again, my concern right now would just be getting the main decisions through.
But, but the vote from the city and the town was three-three-one.
The vote from the city on Broadway did not include that, right?
Well then, I would move that we do one alternate, and allow the city to do one alternate.
We could just clean, we, we'd go back to the city and clean it up, if that's what you wanted to do. It's no big deal.
Okay, okay. Okay, any more questions or discussion?
Should we do the same with Broadway? I know Broadway's representative's been reliable as-
What I can do is let them know that you all added an alternate, and give them the option if they want to do the same thing.
Just, just one more alternate per entity.
I can support that.
Okay, all right. Is that, is that clear? Okay, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, the request from Sanford County Regional Airport Authority for a loan from the revolving loan fund, Ms. Minter. Good evening.
Good evening, again. We have received an application from the Sanford County Regional Airport Authority for a four hundred thousand dollar loan from the revolving loan fund. The term of the loan that has been requested is fifty-nine months, and the interest rate is zero percent. Proceeds from the loan would be used for furniture, audiovisual, and security equipment for the new terminal building, as well as some additional site improvements.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Have we tried anybody to answer this on?
We have not made a loan from the revolving loan fund since it has been established with the new rules. We did make a loan to the Saga prior to the new rules, and that wasn't interest, no, it was not interest-bearing loan, I'm sorry, that all came up whenever we did the new policy, sorry, my memory is lapsing here every day, it was a long day.
No, for the years.
Long day, long day.
All right. And I know this is a sidebar comment, but we also have a, well, a small business loan that Saga runs.
That was, yes, was set up by the old Lee County Economic Development Authority, and it is now handled by Saga.
All right. So they're still, they have funding to provide loans as well.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, first month business. What was that?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand is, is the last number I remember that they had, and I don't, they no longer have any loans, I was saying.
I just didn't know what that number was, I heard twenty-five, but thank you.
Yeah. Well, I'll give you a motion to approve. I offered the motion to approve, but I still want to talk a little bit more about what we're doing here. I'm wondering if the loan application process is too tough for both.
The experience we've had with the policy since it was implemented, we've had one person come to us. It was time-consuming to try to get the committee that is required on a regular application together in a timely manner to meet that need, and then honestly, I think what happened there was when we met and met with the person, somebody on the committee helped them get contacted by a bank that moved faster. I'll just be honest with you, I think that's honestly what happened, and I think they realized they could get financing that they didn't think they could get by having a contact and stuff, so, you know, and we've had no other applications now. Have we really gone out and pushed this fund? No. Obviously, the Sanford Area Growth Alliance knows we have it, so, and other entities that deal with small businesses know we have it. The application-
Our, our fund's not just limited to small business.
Right.
It would be any, any business that came and wanted to-
That's what's kind of puzzling, that we don't have any applicants, but I would rather take it up during the budget session than not tonight, so.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the application. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Are we still on track out there?
August first.
August first, we still, I mean, with all the rain and stuff, are we still in good shape?
I think it's going to be September the first.
Okay, that's fine.
And we appreciate all the support that the county has given, and the airport over the years, especially this year with everything that's going on out there.
We're excited, and, except, four weeks is not bad with the weather we've had, so that's, that's okay.
You're not a thing about nowhere.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. The presentation on the multi-use sports complex, and hopefully, everybody got their notebook on the complex, on the, on where?
At the last meeting, the board asked for, you know, information, so I probably gave you some information that some of you may have already had. And then tonight, as I was going back to the agenda, I realized that the market analysis survey was not very readable, so I printed you a regular copy of that, so that you could read it a little bit better and understand it. It was a good survey. I know it doesn't sound like a lot when you have nine hundred and seventy-four people participate, but when we ran our own survey, one time, we had twelve, something like that, people surveyed, so it is difficult to get people to sit down and take this type of a survey, because it was lengthy, so nine hundred and seventy-four respondents was pretty good. So I'm gonna concentrate on the presentation that starts on page three forty, the last meeting that we had with the committee that's been discussing this project, you know, they went dormant for a couple of years, and they've started meeting again to talk about it, and the company that made the presentation was Brailsford and Dunleavy. I'm not gonna go through all their company history to, because it was obviously heavily based on their, what their company could provide and, and those kind of things, so page three forty-three is basically where I'm gonna start. And so the survey that they did was really to try to find out what does the community want and need, is there a market opportunity for a complex of what we're discussing, what will be the economic impact, will the facility be financially self-supporting, and can the vision-driven solution be realized at OT Sloan? So there's some yeses, and there's some no's to those questions. So this is what the two thousand and fifteen planning committee started and looked at. There are the interviews that they conducted with USA Gymnastics, AAU Basketball, National Travel Basketball, US Soccer, North Carolina Youth Soccer, Top Gun Baseball, North Carolina USSA Softball, and US Lacrosse Eastern Chapter, were some folks outside of the survey that they contacted. So had some focus groups, you know, with some significant business leaders that they met with, and did a lot of conceptual development and drawings and a site analysis and so forth, so we'll talk about those. So this was kind of where they went with the vision of the multi-sports complex, you know, they asked questions of what employers were looking for, and of course, they always talked about quality of life issues, and, you know, how that can help, you know, hire and retain employees here, so they felt like this was, based on what they went through, an important thing for that. So evaluated the Sanford Lee County brand to recruit and retain business and families, generated economic activity by drawing visitors to community, deliver a first-class facility, and maximize the value of the investment were all priorities that were, came out of the planning process. So here are some of the key findings. The community supports the city's and county's vision and quality of life goals. The external market is highly competitive, and at the last meeting, I think it became pretty evident that, you know, there's, you know, other projects going up, and that I think it was real important for everybody to remember, this, this was just not a tournament facility, this was a facility that would support local teams as well in their leagues, and that came, that came out in that committee meeting, so they need to remember that this isn't all about just bringing teams in for tournaments. And an opportunity exists to create significant economic activity through a sports facility. Additional resources be required to operate as a standalone facility, I think it was pretty evident, you know, from the financial analysis they did and things I looked through, that this is not a self-sufficient facility. It would, especially on the debt side, would require significant local funding. So, and they did evaluate the OT Sloan site, and it's just not big enough to handle much more than one field, and, you know, the topography over there is just a little rough to try to do anything big. So the survey showed these existing conditions, or the survey analysis that they did, you know, baseball, very satisfied with playing surfaces, only twenty-three percent. Basketball, forty-four percent. Eighteen percent were very satisfied with the football surfaces, only thirteen percent for soccer, and twenty-two percent for volleyball. So there's a substantial gap between what the city and county residents want in these facilities, or in the facilities that they're using. So percentage of youth sports families who believe Sanford Lee County facilities compare favorably with other communities, it's quite shocking to see seventy-eight percent thought football was okay. Forty-six percent basketball, thirty-five percent baseball, I would figure that one was, would have been a little bit higher with the, what we have out on Trenway Road, thirty-three percent for volleyball, and not surprisingly, twenty-two percent for soccer. Importance of recreation, perceptions on importance of athletic facilities to economic development, you know, there was a strongly agree that, you know, child plays youth sports, that has an impact. They do not have children that play youth sports, but they still thought it was important, was what that box shows there on that left that they have highlighted. So the community views improved facilities as a priority to help economic development. Kind of the same thing here on this one, but, you know, the importance of athletic facilities to attract new residents. Priorities by age, I'm still trying to figure out the twenty-one to twenty-five, providing the community dog park, I didn't know that was such a big deal for the, you know, twenty-one to twenty-five-year-olds, but you can see there are three age groups, groups that identified improving the quality of athletic fields. So market position, you can see the, the green triangles are indoor facilities, the blue circles are outdoor tournament venues, and the planned outdoor facilities. So you can see, there was one south of us that got canceled, and I believe that was one in Aberdeen, so that'd be the lowest white circle, white and blue circle. The one in Carthage has been under construction, I think that might actually be finished, but the other ones are out there, so you can see that.
Did you happen to have the mileage? I mean, I have an idea how far we're out from Carthage, but those two planned outdoor facilities, you said one's in Carthage, and where's the other?
Well, the other one was planned in Southern Pines, but they have Aberdeen, and they've canceled that.
They've canceled it, but, but it's, it's a sixty-mile radius, was what the study took into account.
Let me see if that was there. There is, there is the sixty, the thirty-minute drive and the sixty-minute drive as far as the population aged five to nineteen. So, you know, within a sixty-minute drive, there's four hundred and forty-seven thousand youth that could get, get here in less than an hour.
And how recent is this information?
It's two thousand and fifteen.
And now Fayetteville has built their own baseball.
Right, but, but when we had, you know, when we had the conference call at the last meeting with the Brailsford and Dunleavy folks, you know, they did make the comment that, if you go back to that slide, John, right there, the, the population in Sanford, Fayetteville, and Wilson, they weren't sure about Aberdeen, but they've all increased. You know, so that, but if you look at Raleigh, Cary, Holly Springs, Fuquay, Apex, you know, if you, if you, and then Chatham County, and then with Chatham Park coming on board, the four hundred and forty-seven thousand is probably gonna go significantly higher, you know, by the twenty-twenty census, and that's what they're basing it on, is census numbers.
I think what, what this shows you as far as hotels capacity, and then what this shows you here is the drive time, is that if they do host tournaments, that most of the teams that come are probably gonna be within that sixty-mile radius, so there's not gonna be a lot of night stays. And so that kind of jumped out when we were talking about it last time, is there's a belief that we have a shortage of hotels here, and we probably do, because during the week, you can't get a hotel Monday through Friday in town. But it's, you know, how much, you know, tournaments would impact the hotels is, you know, I don't know. It's not, it didn't come out to us that it was a big impact.
And, and another point too was, they did not know about the Fair, or when they did this study, we didn't know about the Fairfield Inn being built out in the northern part of the county. So that was news to them. And then, I mean, you'll get to it later, I guess, but, you know, the, the person that's proposing to donate the property for this will also build a hotel on this property. So that'll be two additional hotels, you know, to factor in.
It said on here, a minimum of 2,000 hotel rooms.
Right. That would be to host, you know, those big, you know, southern regional type tournaments. So, you know, that was, that was what their estimate was. Tournament demand, projected annual tournament demand. This is what they projected for, for us, which would be moderate, is really what they felt like. And so, you know, needed basically eight rectangles and, you know, I thought 28 diamonds was a little high, but they're the experts, not me. So here were the program recommendations on rectangles, diamonds, and indoor. The committee pretty much, you know, mainly for cost, eliminated the indoor and concentrated on rectangles and diamonds. And as you'll see in the final estimated here, site comparison we did. But that was the, the final kind of schematic that they came up with.
That schematic represents how many acres?
The amount of acreage they were talking about here was... Let me see. It's over 100 that they would be acquiring. Oh, great.
That's okay.
I'm almost there. Total acreage is 132 acres that they would be acquiring. 96 of those acres is highly developable, 16 medium, meaning that a little bit higher cost, and then 21 acres is of low developable. So you're really looking around, right around 110 of the 132 acres could be developed. So on this, on this plan, you have eight rectangle fields. It was originally proposed that two would be synthetic fields. There was some discussion about having, lowering that number to nine fields, and having the ninth field be a tournament-type field where you would have enough stands for about 1,500 people. And then taking more of the natural grass fields and using synthetic. So they wanted that to be looked at. You would need 975 parking spaces. There were five diamonds, all natural fields. There was a hotel proposed out front. There was a commercial building also proposed, destination playground, roadside pavilion, and nature trails, walking trails, and a pedestrian bridge, because there's some water on the site. And so there's kind of some of their conceptual plans of what it would kind of look like, you know, when we were there.
Top left, what does that blue represent on the right-hand side of that?
That is a pond.
Is that going to be developed?
Yes, sir. They had talked about fishing and that kind of thing. Actually listed as a detention pond, but they had talked about the possibility of...
Stocking it.
Stocking. So that was it, you know, from, from the committee meeting and all the other information. We gave you the committee plans on meeting again in a couple of weeks.
Yep.
And trying to, you know, gauge support and what's, what steps they're going to take next. And one of the steps was to try to get a more realistic cost estimate of what that plan would take to complete. They do have commitments from at least one of the landowners to, to donate property for this, so.
The whole 132?
No, sir. I'm still working on it.
Good God.
Not half. Not half.
Just questioning.
They gotta work on the other half.
So we can bring it back after we get the...
There's a lot more discussion to occur and a lot more specifics to develop.
At what point will you get to how you pay for it?
I'm sorry? Soon.
Yeah.
At what point will you get to how it's going to be paid for?
Yes, sir. Working on the financial model.
Yep. Okay. Any more questions for Dr. Brown? Okay.
No questions, just a statement. I mean, I've traveled to a couple of these facilities and seen them up close and personal. It's very embarrassing when your kids are on a travel team, and they go to the WRL facility, and it's incredible. And then they come down here and they, the teams come to play here, on a parking lot in the Lions Club at Fairgrounds. That's, that's, it's a, it's a letdown.
Well, I have to say, you know, when we were fir, when we, when we first did the survey, you know, in 2015, that got a lot of interest. And, and a lot of people got excited because we were going out, you know, interviewing people. And then we did kind of put it to the side for a while, and, and that's something that's never let up. You know, they, they have continued to come back. When are you going to talk, you know, about doing some type of athletic park? Because I think, and you and I have talked about it, you know, you see on the map that John showed, you know, we are well set up, you know, we have that sweet spot, you know, where, and I, I've told some of you this story, when my daughter was playing travel ball, and we went to a tournament in Winterville, which is just outside of Greenville, and played in a metal building that was built in a soybean field. And the people that were there were Lee County, Durham County, Orange County, and Wake County. And we're like, why in the world are we having to travel this far, you know, for, for this kind of a tournament? We had to get hotel rooms because of the time of their play and that type of thing. I hear all the time from folks in Wake County and Durham and Orange from parents, if, if we have a facility here, you know, they'll utilize it. But then at the same time, our citizens here are demanding something like this, just, just for their kids to play on. Like you said, for, you know, the Lions Club has been so good to sassle, but at the same time, it's not ideal by any stretch for...
There's some discussion whether or not, you know, the schools are going to be open for people to come play on a consistent basis and still be tournament-ready.
Right.
Can't have both.
Right.
They gotta, they gotta keep that in mind.
And, you know, that's something we talked about. The scheduling that we talked about in the committee meeting is how to find that balance between tournament play with bringing people in, which is good for economic development, but at the same time, it's the taxpayers paying for the facility, and you want them to have first preference of being able to use the fields. So more to come. Okay. Appointment, county tax administrator, Ms. McGee.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is good news tonight. The Board has chosen to fill the position of the Lee County Tax Administrator because Mary Yow is retiring after a long time.
Long time.
With the county.
Very diplomatic.
But the Board of Commissioners must appoint a tax administrator to a term of no less than two years or greater than four years. And this appointment will be effective June 1st, 2019, and continue until May 31st, 2003. And the person that the Board has chosen is Michael Brown.
Okay.
Come on down.
You can read it if you want to. If you're tired of listening to me.
........................................................................................................................ Now therefore, be resolved that Michael Brown is appointed to the position of tax administrator for a term expiring on May 31st, 2023. And as such, she shall have the powers and duties of both county assessor and tax collector. And he is directed to take over the office and fill the necessary, file a necessary bond to comply with statutory requirements. The date is the 6th of May, 2019.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the appointment for Mr. Brown.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion, questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity, Chairman Darrell Runcle and other commission members, Mr. Crumpton and staff. I'd like to, I cherish the moment to work with the citizens of Lee County and do a fine job for them, and working with staff also. Mary's done a great job over the years. I've known her for many years in my prior job that I had, and have, have cherished time working with her recently. She's done a good job with the office, and I certainly look forward to working with the citizens of Lee County and staff. Thank you.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
On board in this capacity.
Yeah. Appreciate your support.
Thank you very much. Okay. Manager's comments?
I don't have anything further.
Okay. We've covered a lot tonight. Okay. Commissioners' comments? Mr. Smith?
Just, I went to the Sand Hills Breakfast, and everyone has one of the, so go through it. It's all yours.
Thank you.
Just in reflection of last week and the tragedy that happened at UNC Charlotte, I just wanted to say that I'm thinking of those families. I know my little brother is in school, and it was their last day of class. They thought they were, you know, they were preparing for finals, and a tragedy like that happens, it's, it's heartbreaking. And I just wanted to say that I'm thinking of those families. And also, on Thursday, it was the National Day of Prayer, and I just think that it's important that we continually pray for our leaders in our country.
I actually didn't want to know the way of it.
Oh, no.
Not paying attention. But I do remember Happy National Nurse Nurses' Day. I love all my nurses. And Happy Mother's Day to all of you. That's it.
All right. Well, I've said enough. So I think we have a motion.
Madam Chair, we move into closed session. Statute 143.3, A5 to the statute, or agents concerned negotiations of the amount of compensations or other terms of an informant contract.
Okay. We are now in closed session. Thank you very much.